All right, it's six o'clock. We've got Kate and Cory with us. So we'll get started and call the meeting to order and Commissioner Alderson's gonna do the pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Erickson's gonna do the invocation, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just for all.
Please bow with me. Wonderful gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time that we have together to conduct business. Father, we pray that you will continue to bless our city. Father, we pray that you will lead and guide this business and discussions as we go through this tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank y'all very much. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Here.
Here.
Jacqueline Granberry?
Present.
David?
Here.
Eric Harvey?
Here.
Willie?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. All right, we have approval and correction of minutes from our prior meetings being the study session of October the 13th and the regular meeting of October the 18th. What you've had an opportunity to review, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion that we approve them from the study section in the regular meetings from October 18th.
And both of them?
Yeah.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Awards and presentations and we're awfully honored tonight to have a new police officer, Mr. Dominique M. Green. So Michael, if you'll come forward.
Look up the meeting people.
That's right. I met him. I met him over the weekend and he is a tall, young man.
Wow, really feel short, right?
Yeah.
He raised your right hand, please. I, Dominique Green.
I'm Dominique Green.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
As a member of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution.
To uphold the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The State of Tennessee.
State of Tennessee.
And the ordinance.
And the ordinance.
And charter.
And charter.
Of the City of Mount Pleasant.
Of the City of Mount Pleasant.
I will faithfully execute.
Faithfully execute.
My duties.
My duties.
In accordance with the general orders.
In accordance with the general orders.
Of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
Of the Mount Pleasant Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Dominique, it's an honor to have you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So you've been here three weeks, maybe?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And go to the academy, January?
January.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Good deal.
Glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next we have mayor's appointment, Mount Pleasant Recreation Commission. Kate?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, we have an opening created by Donna Stevenson who moved out of the area. And we have somebody that's a willing participant, Kathy Pepe, and she's here in the audience. And it's up to you at this point, but that's kind of what actually the Recreation Commission formally voted to recommend that to you as a full commission.
That's correct. And I can tell you Kathy's already doing the job.
Yeah, she's already working.
And thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
She was a big help during the barbecue festival, so.
Am I saying your name right? Is it Pepe, just like the restaurant Pepe? Okay, I'll make sure.
So entertain a motion?
I make a motion to add Ms. Kathy Pepe to the Park and Recreation Board.
To fill the uninspired term.
Of Donna Stevenson.
Donna Stevenson.
Don't have those dates in front of me, but we'll match it up in our records.
Okay, perfect. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number six, completion review and unfinished business. This is ordinance number 2022-1105. It is a public hearing and a final reading. An ordinance modifying procedures for inspection of public records for the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
So Mayor and Commissioners, since the first reading on this, we've done a little bit of homework, Loretta and Michael Haywood and I, and talked with MTAS. And we do have the ability to not have a specific named employee. So we've actually created a, an address that's open records at mtpleasant-tn.gov, just like all of ours. So most of ours come in, to Loretta, but they come in via the computer and not hard copy. And so we've changed it since first reading everywhere where it had Loretta's name to open records. And so more than one person sees that and will address it that way. And everything else that needed to be updated, as far as like our city website and things like that, has been done. But the changes since your first reading have been from putting L Garner at Mount Pleasant to open records.
And the change overall was just to correct the website?
Yeah.
It's not a totally brand-new open record, George?
And we have the ability to make this a resolution, which I guess we could do if we ever have to change it again, but it's already second reading on the resolution. So we just decided to stick with it.
Good deal. Any comments, questions from the commission? Hearing none. Any comments from the audience?
Yeah, this is a final reading.
It is. Hearing none, please make a note in the minutes, please. Entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to accept ordinance 2022-1105.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from mayor, I've got a couple of quick things. I made a comment about this in our work session Thursday about a very nice luncheon. We, a number of us attended for Dr. Martin, which is going out as the current Vice Mayor of the City of Columbia and has been for how many years, Miss Jackie?
Ninety-four. Thirty-nine-four. So how many years is that?
A bunch.
Yeah.
And it was an honor to be there. She, uh, she's very.
Twenty-eight years, yeah.
I thought it was thirty. Maybe twenty-eight. I thought she'd been in politics for thirty, but it may be twenty-eight.
And it was an honor to be there. And ladies, y'all, were there anything y'all would like to add to that?
They, you know, just mentioned that they, they are doing the, the justice, what's the, what am I, I can't think of the acronym.
Uh.
Anyway, this, this city contributed $500 to the program that they're trying to create, the monument to talk about what happened in 1946.
Forty-six.
In, in Columbia. So we, we became a part of that. And that was this whole luncheon that Mayor's talking about was a big fundraiser for that. And I know they raised over $50,000.
Over $50,000.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ms. Alderson. I'm looking right at you, Granberry.
Ladies, can y'all, anything y'all would like to add?
She's also played a big part of Columbia State, starting out with diversity, all the way up to the president's assistance. And she's been there since Columbia State's been there. So she's been a big part of Columbia for a long time. And always willing to help and give in any kind of way she can. So I'm real proud of her.
We still have tough shoes to fill.
Yeah.
All right. Second thing is, there's been some conversation, there was Thursday night, about the light that we have approved in Polk and Zion. And yesterday morning, there was an accident up there. I saw it myself. And tomorrow afternoon, City of Columbia hears that request to annex that property in. There is a need for a light there, there's no question. If that property is annexed in and it does pass through the, the annexation and the zoning and the, everything it's gotta do, they are going to be required by their traffic study to put a light in at Ridley, Old Zion, and Zion.
Three different, yeah, three different traffic.
So once we figure out if in fact that's going to happen, then we'll, if our, if not it's going to happen, then we'll be able to move forward.
You're saying, Mayor, that the City of Columbia will put in a red light in our city limits regardless?
They're gonna be required to.
I don't know, the city will, the developer will.
The developer will. It'll be required by the, by the traffic study.
When I get, I'm sorry. I guess my question is, since that's gonna be done in stages, what timeframe are we looking at?
We won't know anything until tomorrow.
It hadn't even been approved yet.
Okay.
I think it's something we're gonna need to keep revisiting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because my understanding right now, all that's gonna be built is on the right-hand side of Old Zion Road going to the forty-four.
That's eight, hold on, yeah.
Well, I can tell you that it, I have seen the traffic study and it is going to be a requirement.
Well, I mean, if it is, I think Chief has told me that, Brooms has told me that we don't need to, I guess, let this hold us up or whatever. And I'm in total agreement.
Well, if it's gonna be required by somebody else to do it.
Yeah.
Well, I'll bring that back up on another subject.
All right, that's all I've got. Monthly and financial budget report, please, ma'am.
Good evening. I think you all got through, should've gotten your reports earlier today. I didn't get the bank statements from yesterday, so that was, hold up and getting those, those out. And the only thing that we've really got is that we have gone forward with our, the option, giving our utility customers the option to receive their bills by email instead of by, by physical mail. So all they have to do is come in and sign up and they can start that immediately. We spent several months, Ashley and Michael spent several months testing it. We had a select set of customers that we used to, to test it on and they agreed. And it has worked well for them. It really works well for some of our industrials who have headquarters in other states. They get their, that way they get their bills in time for them to get it through all their processes and to get them paid on time. So we think it's gonna be certainly a positive step. But it is an option. So if people had rather still get it in the mail, that, that's still available. It's just that this is an additional option, an additional, additional service we'll be offering to our utility customers. Does not apply to property taxes, those are mailed out from the state. Also, it would just be your utility bills.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions? I think we're, financially, we're just, we're stable.
Yeah.
Everybody get it today?
Yes, yeah. Any questions, Loretta?
Just didn't have time to look at all of it.
Well, if you've got questions, we're happy to answer them.
Yeah, absolutely. Hearing none, entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion to accept the mountain financial budget report.
Second. We got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
I just want to acknowledge that we did have a bond sale today at ten o'clock this morning. And the market's been very volatile. Last Thursday, we were talking about that we may get to the point of about 4.75 or higher because the market was changing every day. But we did close today and we had a 4.28% before additional cost, the cost to do this bond. So the final cost was 4.45. So then we had five different bidders. So it was competitive. And I think it's been, we came out very well. Of course, we didn't come out like we did eighteen months ago. The market has changed, but it could've been, I think we did really well for today. The annual debt service will be $152,593. They did make a good faith deposit today in our account already as Raymond Jane is who was awarded the bond. Anything I'm missing on that?
I can tell you this, there were nine bidders.
Initially, yeah.
And I can remember when our city wouldn't have had two.
And five were in bond bids.
Yeah, we had five formal bids, nine interested.
They were coming in right at the last, till the very last, last minute.
So I think that speaks very well for our financial condition here because it is, we've recently had an upgrade in our movies.
Yes.
Which was nice to see. So I know we don't always please everybody, but we're doing what's right for this community.
And a lot of things that the commission's been doing, things like the, the capital improvement plan and strategic planning, those all bode very well for us as a city that they see that we're planning and looking towards the future and passing the debt policy and all the things that we've done recently have all, that helped us a lot. Also want to mention, just to acknowledge the election that we just had, that we have a new commissioner, Pam Johnson and Mike Davis, that both won. And I hate that we're not gonna have Eric. Maybe we'll have him back in two years. But the, the election commission told us early on that they would not be able to certify the election until November 21st. And since we have such an early meeting this month, we won't have any swearing in until the December meeting. So just to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
Yep. Anything else, Kate?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, special reports from wastewater?
Yeah, the, the good news is that we're bidding out, they've already been advertising newspaper, and I think you'll be awarding the bids in the December meeting. And that is the Rainy Street Sewer Project. It's the smallest part of the big sewer projects that we have, but it's finally approved by the state to get that bid out. And then we're also bidding out lagoon repairs. And both of those have been in the paper. And you'll have that in front of you in December to award those bids. So that's progress.
That's good. That's good news. Anything on the gas system?
Nope, everything is running smoothly there.
Yep, good deal. All right, number 11, new business. Resolution 2022-47, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of water and sewer revenue and tax bonds by the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, and a power mount not to exceed $1,892 to finance water and sewer system improvements and extensions and related costs.
Mayor and Commissioners, I want to make sure that we don't have any confusion because it's easy for there to be confusion since we just talked about closing a bond today. So the bond that we closed today, you all passed the resolutions for those bonds July 19th in our July meeting. So that's done and behind us. This bond is the initial, the additional debt that we had to take on to finish a sewer project. If you remember, we got a whole bunch more grant money from USDA, but we also had to take on $1,892 in debt. And that's what this bond is doing. This, this resolution and then the, the authorizing the issuance, the B on the agenda. Just want to make sure there was no confusion that two completely different bonds, because there's a lot going on here. But you had already voted on the whole finance package with USDA and taking this debt on. Now we're just, actually, we don't need to do this resolution until ready to spend the money, but we're gonna go ahead and ready to have it passed. So as we move forward, it's already been done.
Correct. All right, any questions from the mission? Hearing none, entertain a motion?
Mayor, make a motion in favor of resolution 2022-47 as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. B, resolution 2022-48, resolution authorizing the issuance, sale and payment of $1,892 of bonds by the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance of bond anticipation notes prior to the issuance of the bonds, and authorizing the pledge of revenues of the water and sewer system and the levy of taxes to pay the bonds and notes. Anything else you want to add to that, Kate?
No, I, I guess I should say something again. Basically, this is, you always have to go through the two resolutions. This is the actual issuance. And it's just like any time you're borrowing money, you have to show how you're going to pay for that. And if something happens with our economy, this is a 38-year loan, if we have to raise rates to pay the loan off, we will. So that's gotta be part of, of it. We, we don't intend to, and that's not the intent going into it whatsoever, but you have to have that language in there, just like you have to have a job to get a mortgage. And if you lose that job, you've gotta get another one.
Yep.
And Julian spoke about this at our study session a while back.
Yes.
Yes.
I can't remember what month that was, but fairly recently.
She does a much better job than I do, but she does, yeah, that, it's just the language and it's in the same language that's in this other bond that we passed for the downtown and all the other projects that we have.
All right, any questions?
The only question I have on the water and sewer.
Yep.
Is, I know, you know, everything has to go to water and sewer. So, I mean, I understand the levy of the taxes, but should I have read, you know, for the sewer syst, you know, for, I'm just asking.
No.
Okay.
Not these. Where is the, their full faith and credit? I believe we're putting the back, the entire backing of the city on there.
But I just knew property taxes couldn't go. But in a case like this, property taxes could?
We are promising that we will repay it.
Whatever it takes.
Through the levy of taxes.
Yeah.
And that, obviously, no one has the intent of that ever happening.
But it's 38 years, so you, if that language isn't in there, they're not gonna accept the law.
They wrote it.
I understand, but I understand, you know, when we go, we say, this entity can't pay for this, you know, and that. But I understand.
And this is.
Totally different.
We have a special bond council for them. I will get a better answer for you for next time. But, but yes, it would be paid first. We'd have to raise our rate. But if, if something big happened, we would have to find a way.
I would imagine we'd have to get permission from the Comptroller's Office and everything to be able to do anything like paying anything out of the utility fund.
That's correct.
Would not be pretty.
Yeah.
No.
Well, I mean, that's not what happens.
No.
Let's hope. Fingers crossed.
No, fingers crossed.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion in favor of resolution 2022-48 as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Second. Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number 12, consideration of city judge. And as I spoke on Thursday night, periodically, our community looks back at all of the city functions that we have. And I can tell you with what, within the last year, 18 months, we swapped audit teams. So what we're asking is, is that we have a consideration that we take invitations. What a great title. That we take.
We put a notice.
New applications. We're gonna publish this with, in the paper. And, and just consider whether at this time, we should look at a new city judge. And it's just a normal course of business. It's much like we do with all of our, all of our functions. I know we bid out the, all the stuff for the water and sewer. And we look at that as well. So Mr. Wooliver, I see you signed up. Would you like to speak now? Is that what you're here for?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm really just here to answer questions. I've been your city judge since 2006. Since that time, I'm not aware of a complaint. If one's been filed, it's a new one on me. I'm here most every other Wednesday. I run my court respectfully and efficiently. I've never asked for and never received a raise from you all. You pay about $400 a month for what I do. I can tell you, I can make more money sitting in Columbia at my desk than I do coming here. But it's an honor to serve the citizens of Mount Pleasant. I'm on about my 16th year of doing that. I understand what the mayor is saying, but I will share with you. I got a call a few weeks ago from the city manager asking if I was gonna resign my position. But no, but I work at your pleasure. And if it's your pleasure to, to remove me, then I understand your position and I'll act accordingly. But as I said, I'm here because it's on the agenda and I'll answer any questions that you have.
So you're willing to keep serving?
I'm perfectly willing to do so if that's the board's pleasure.
And as I have made the comment, you know, I'd love for you to fill out and return the application?
I won't. I won't, I won't reapply. If it's the board's decision to make a change, then I'll respect that.
Can I, can I, I guess, make a motion to retain Jake as our city attorney or business? Do you have to?
You can make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
As city judge.
As city judge.
Okay, do we have a second? I hear no seconds. Anybody like to make a motion if we put this out for application?
I make a motion to relieve Mr. Wooliver of his service with Mount Pleasant as city judge and maybe take, look for other applications.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second.
I'd like to say one thing. And I hope this is not bringing this about because what has been going on for the last two months. I hope we're not taking it out on him for that reason. It's awful odd that this is coming up during that time. Judge, I'm sorry.
All right, roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
Yes.
Jacqueline Granberry?
We're voting for. Remove him from his duties and put it out to, for others to apply.
Application.
Applications. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Mike Davis?
No.
Eric Harvey?
I'm gonna abstain.
And Willie Alderson?
Yeah.
Okay. Vote is three yes, one no, and one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you. Jake, thank you for your service. All right, 13, GRE LLC lawsuit settlement?
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners and Cory, I'll need a little direction from you on this. I don't know if we actually need a vote for them to approve this settlement. Though we, we have settled this case. It's settled for $7,000. This case has been going on for over three years. It involved a tax sale property at 522 Gant Street. And it sold at the tax sale and then sold again. It involved DuBois closing. It involved several different parties. We've paid more than $7,000 in legal, we haven't paid him, but our, we, our insurance company has paid out more than that. So we felt that the $7,000 was a very good settlement to end it. So do we need them to just acknowledge the, the settlement or?
I would like them to approve the settlement in the minutes. This is something we felt like Kate had the authority to authorize because of the low amount. But like she said, this was a, a tax sale for 2017 delinquent taxes, I believe. There was some issue about notice and.
Right.
This is the final piece to the resolution.
And the other parties that were over $20,000 that they had to pay into it. So we were the smaller piece of the puzzle as far as getting the settlement done. I feel like it was a good resolution for the city.
Any questions or comments for Kate or from Cory on this?
I guess the motion we're asking for is to approve the settlement.
Correct.
And the check is cut to GRE LLC. So that's basically, that's the settlement that you're approving.
That's correct. Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the GRE LLC lawsuit settlement.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Second. Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, no.
No.
Okay, opposed, motion carries. Letters of credit for Sugar Creek.
So Mayor and Commissioners, we're getting into new territory. We're finishing subdivisions. So we haven't done this and we're gonna be doing a lot more of it. But part of that process is that we'll have letters of credit for utilities, stormwater. This particular one, it'll be back on the agenda in December, is we have a letter of credit for the road topping. So the, seeing that they've done it, but when the subdivision is done, they'll have to do another layer. And so there is a letter of credit from First Bank for Regent Homes. And it's in the amount of $98,938. And Ms. Granberry knows that was all agreed upon in the planning commission meeting as well. So you're only voting on one tonight. Water and wastewater will be on the agenda in December, I imagine, and so will storm water. But it's, it's a way to protect the city, the ultimate investment, because going forward, we'll, we'll adopt these roads and they'll be our roads and we'll own them. But we don't want to own them until they're exactly the way we want them to be. So this is the first of several in every neighborhood we're developing from here on. um, this is the first of several and every neighborhood we're developing from here on out will have similar letters of credit.
So with this money, is this similar to the bond that's already in place for the neighborhood? Or is it in addition to?
This is for the top coat.
This got a credit, Mr. Harvey, for like the damage and stuff that'll be done to the roads that, you know, it'll be.
Like what the existing road that's there has been pressed by the.
No, this is the new road. Yeah.
So, nope, nope. I guess my objection that we still need to get them to come back and repave what's already there because they've.
I don't remember if we've had any conversations with some of your specific complaints. Have you talked, have you talked with Regent Homes?
I did hear several.
I know. Have you, have you had conversations with Regent Homes at all? Okay.
Yeah.
Rodney, have we, as far as the complaint that, um, Commissioner Harvey is getting on?
The, the, uh, the issue was, or the, the talking point that was brought up to me was did we do the full survey of the road condition before any construction took place? Do we have before and afters of everything to say that we are the ones that pulled the road up?
And I know.
I could be a witness to that because you live there. The day after the truck came to remove some of the equipment, water lines under the road in my front yard busted and started flooding. Like that morning, there was a puddle. I mean, I would attest to that or whatever if you need it. Uh, because I was behind the truck when it came through. It was low boy.
Would it be best if we could get, is Andy, is that his name? Uh, maybe can walk through some of the specific addresses, but that's not what you're voting on, but you know, just look at the existing road that's already there that's been there for quite some time and maybe just see if we can do any damage control on that.
So you're saying if a contractor comes in on, uh, and starts another subdivision, they're not liable for streets that they tear up coming in and out of the?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that what you're voting on tonight is the new road.
I know that, but we, we don't know then whether he's planning on fixing the other roads or not.
I don't know. I don't know that they even have notice of it yet.
Again, it's just Kate saying, we are talking about just the new area. Sorry.
No, I get it.
And you're hearing it from your neighbors. I understand.
The reason for the top coat being delayed is they didn't want to put the top coat on until this road, all the construction was done.
And that's ordinary in this type of business.
And I do think y'all have done a good job with this one to make sure the bonds are in place. And as Kate was saying, the bond, Ms. Granberry will know from being at that meeting, but, um, the bonds are going in place for things that are unfinished. And for maintenance bonds for the things that are finished. So the parts of the public infrastructure that the city that is done, the city will accept those things also. And you'll do that in conjunction with the maintenance bond. So those things will come before you at the same time. It'll make more sense when we're saying, okay, this is done, we'll accept it. And then this is the maintenance bond that we're adding to.
This, quite frankly, in this current economic time we find ourselves in, this letter of credit could be out there for five to seven to ten years.
Well, actually, the planning commission put a stipulation on it that it could be for three years or seventy percent of completed units.
Okay, seventy is a good number.
And that, so that can be revisited, yeah.
Yeah.
Because I mean. If we had no kidding in the economic times we find ourselves in, higher mortgage rates, higher costs.
Right. That was a concern that was brought up.
So that's why we put three years stipulation on to revisit at that time.
Yeah, good.
If it wasn't complete.
Any other comments, questions? Good questions. Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the letter of credit for Sugar Creek. New roads only.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries.
And Eric, maybe you could help us kind of make a list of things that you've already brought out, but we could at least, you know.
I can write through there and tell you where.
The planning commission will be glad to hear your complaint, Eric, that we can approach with it, but we'll need you to come and let us know what they are.
Yeah.
All right, utility write-offs. Everybody was provided a copy of those at, uh, the work session. Again, these are, this is confidential information. But I will say that a number of them, approximately half, we couldn't collect anyway.
Unreachable.
Yeah.
So, uh,
But the list was much better.
It certainly is, isn't it? Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the write-off list.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Williver was the only person that we had sign up for general comments. And, uh, Vice Mayor, any comments?
I go to you today.
Good for you.
You're not wearing your mask.
And I'm still a die-hard Alabama fan. I respect you too, but I still want to go down, okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
First of all, I'd just like to thank the citizens for voting with trust back in the may to serve another four years. And I'd just like to say one other thing on the Pope Lane. I mean, we voted for it, but we never did take a vote to put it off.
Put, put, put it off? I'm not sure I understand.
We're not doing the work. We never did take a vote to to put it off. We voted to do it.
To do what? I'm sorry.
The red light. You got back the red light?
Yes.
Oh, okay. No, yeah. No, we, we did discuss that.
We discussed it, but we didn't vote.
We discussed it with the power system too. We can put it on the agenda in December if you want to.
Yeah, be happy to.
We, we never did vote it off. So what happens, I mean, we vote for something to go there. What happens if somebody does have a a wreck and a death? Is the city liable for not doing what they said it was going to do since it's in the city limits of Mount Pleasant?
I, I know the conversation was very open with the power system and the power system manager. He felt the same way that he didn't want to proceed with the, like, given the fact that that time it was fifteen hundred new homes.
It's not going to happen, I'm telling you. It's not going to happen with Columbia.
We'll know tomorrow. We can certainly look at it in December and move forward from there.
So if, um, they annex it, it'd be on them, right? Then that'd be less than.
And that, that traffic study states that they are going to be required by law to put a traffic light at Rainy Park, Old Zion Road, and Zion Pope Lane.
And Zion Road is in the city limits of Mount Pleasant.
The property that they are going to annex is going to be in the city of Columbia, Tennessee.
I hope you want me.
And, and I don't know that.
I've seen it.
Yeah, tomorrow is, is that a city commission vote tomorrow?
You can go to the city of Columbia online and get it right this very minute if you'd like to.
It'd probably take two readings, I would imagine. Also.
But.
All I've seen done is, is on the old Sullivan property. I haven't seen nothing.
I, I got it by going to the city of Columbia's website.
Well, I saw it when they put it in the Daily Herald to be annexed. That's what I'm going by, ma'am.
Okay, cool. Anything else?
No.
Eric? Good a pleasure. You may say that right up front.
Yeah, well, I have enjoyed, uh, being here with you guys the last two years. It has been a, uh, interesting time and I appreciate the, uh, support that I've gotten from everybody up here and also from the citizens. So congratulations, Ms. Pam. I, I'm very confident and comfortable, uh, with you going forward. I think it's a great thing. So, um.
We know how to reach you.
Oh, yeah.
We know where you live.
Been an honor serving with you.
It has been an honor, although I've had more than two years with you. I've had, ever since you've been here with you, but it's rare for these two.
Absolutely. Ms. Willie?
Honestly, I have enjoyed you, Eric, and no miss you, but we got a good replacement.
Oh, yeah.
No, you did a awesome job. We appreciate everything you've done.
Absolutely. I made my comments during the, uh, about Dr. Barton and the, and the stoplight. So I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I still move.
Got a first, got a second. All those in favor? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.